Good evening and welcome to, just checking that we're on, good evening and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Today is September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and this meeting is hereby called to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail.
Here.
Five minutes.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ceniziano is absent. Boucher.
Here.
Reyes is absent. Kohler.
Present.
With five present and two absent, there is a quorum. The first order of business this evening is to approve two previous council meeting minutes. The first being the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes this evening? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. This brings us to the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting minutes. Looking for a motion to approve those. Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. This evening, we are going to begin with a presentation for our five-year financial forecast for the fiscal year twenty-two and the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget and capital improvements plan. To that, we will be deferring to Finance Director Molly Talkington and Public Works Director Erin Grosskoff.
Thank you Mayor and Council, good evening. So we're, whoop, let me make some room. We're starting off the evening with our five-year financial forecast. And so what is a five-year financial forecast? It's our starting point for decision-making. It indicates trends and tests our financial policy targets. And this year, we focus on eight funds. So last year was seven, I added the E nine-one one fund this year. And really, to understand forecasting is we're taking services as-is and projecting out. So there isn't a change to services, right? We're looking at how we do services now, how, what revenues we receive now, and looking at that going forward. So it, we focus a lot of time on like the high-impact revenues and expenditures, really salary benefits, and the rest are projected at CPI. So at the time, they looked at Consumer Price Index, it was three-point-five percent increase. So over time, the Consumer Price Index has really kind of jumped around. And you can see twenty-one to twenty-three, we really hit some peaks in CPI. We trended back down towards the end of twenty-three, but now twenty-four is starting to go back up a little bit. So we're just a little bit under four percent right now. The five-year forecast, I'm going to incorporate it into the budget presentation, and we'll talk about it together in detail. But really, the outcome of the forecast was we need to look at public safety support, stabilizing revenues and fund balance, and investments in capital. And you'll see these themes when we get to each fund and we talk about it. So for the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget, it's really more of a broader document. It's a communication tool to the public, to staff, a policy document, what council has decided, how we'll lead the city during that year, financial planning and transparency, and an operations guide. The budget is the foundation that takes that forecast from the five-year forecast set output, and we use that to help set what I call the budget strategy. And it helps then create the plan to provide the high-quality services our residents are used to. And the budget does also include the capital improvements plan. So the budget includes that first year of the capital improvements plan. Here, we have a five-year plan, so from twenty-five to twenty-nine. So the general fund, this is our core city operations. When we look at revenues, in twenty-four, our projection is higher than where we were for twenty-two actuals. So twenty-two actuals were thirty-seven-point-five million, and twenty-four is thirty-nine-point-three million. We're very similar to the two thousand and twenty-three actual, but I pointed out here, we did have the one-time ARPA grant of the three-point-two million, so it does kind of put a little boost in our twenty-three actuals, but it's a one-time funding source. And then so into twenty-five, we're projected basically flat for revenues in the budget. You can see the property taxes, the lowest part of the column, is our largest revenue in the general fund. So let's look at these a little more detail. So property tax, I'll talk about on its own, but sales taxes, we have the state sales tax and home road sales tax. We're seeing positive collections, the five-year forecast, together, there were about eight-point-two million. But between the time I put together the five-year forecast and then we look at the budget, I had a few more months of actual data. And so we're seeing a little bit more positive trends, so I did increase that budget to eight-point-three million dollars. There's still this pent-up demand for the services. We're still seeing people out in our community. You know, you go to our kind of major shopping area, Gulf and Oconquin area, you see a lot of people, a lot of foot traffic. Our projection is virtually equal to what our budget was, but that's good. We are a little more positive in our projection last year, and so we're hitting our targets, which is great. And I do have an increase carrying in to twenty-five at one-point-seven percent. Income tax, this one again, we looked at the forecast, it was four-point-one million. At the budget, we've got a little bit more information, so it's not budget at four-point-two million. There are record, still seeing record corporate profits, positive wage growth, increased unemployment. I think growth probably will be higher in twenty-four over budget, so three-point-seven percent. But twenty-five, it'll come back down a little bit because we're seeing, if you're starting to look at the trends at income tax, and I use the Illinois Municipal League, they do a lot of the revenue forecasting for income tax, that there is some slowing down in individual income tax. So that's in there as well with corporate, but corporate so far is keeping a boost in the income taxes. So we still see an increase in twenty-five. Personal property replacement tax is budget at two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. It didn't change from the forecast to budget. So this is one, I like to say it's a pie, and the state decides how they cut up the pie each year in whatever manner they want. There is some basis to the things they include in the pie, but the most information we have in the last two years, so last year it began and it's continuing in this year, is that at the state, there was funds that were misallocated to PPRT. They've started to clawback some of the funding they gave us in prior years, and that's going to continue into the next budget. So we're actually flat to the budget for twenty-four projection, right? Because we already knew about that clawback, we projected lower, our budget lower. But there's a continued downward trend for twenty-five because of that clawback action in the state. This revenue also impacts the library as they see twenty-six percent of this revenue. So the portion you're seeing here is the portion the city receives, and then the library has a portion. Food and beverage tax, well, there's a lot of continued growth. I had, this is the same for forecast and budget, one-point-eight million. This is great, we've added additional food revenue, our venues, we've seen more foot traffic. Twenty-four, the projection, about almost eight percent over what I had budgeted. And I'm keeping that increase about two-and-a-half percent into the twenty-five budget. But this is an area for possibly even more growth, because we are really close to seeing some more locations and more opportunities to expand in the food and beverage arena in our city. Same with hotel tax, this one really did well, because we finally had a full year of our new hotel. So the forecast and the budget are high at four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, which is great. The projection is about fifty-nine percent over budget, because we're seeing that the increased revenue from stays plus the full year of an additional hotel. That's really a big jump in one year, and I think that's really due to having the whole year of a new hotel. So I've scaled back the increase, but there's still an increase in the following year of a one percent. Now, back to sales tax. Sales tax has been talked about a lot with the state, specifically when we're talking about grocery tax. So the state had paused the grocery tax for a while, it came back, and now the state has said, beginning January first of two thousand and twenty-six, the state's no longer going to have a grocery tax. So there's one percent of our current sales, state sales tax. They did have an option for the locals to then add a grocery tax. So this one's really, it will be about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar impact to our budget, but that won't be until the two thousand and twenty-six budget year. So during twenty-five, it's brought up here, because we'll have more discussions at the end of this year and into twenty-five about what does this mean, what does the local option look like, and what would we like to do, city council with this revenue? Property tax levy. So here's our beautiful dollar bill. And this is taking, just, you know, a sample of one home. This can be different for your house, because you might be in a different township. You know, we're trying to give you a good glimpse of what the tax levy looks like and how it's broken down for the city. But as you know, all the way to the left, you have the city rolling metals, it's fifteen percent. When we did this last year, it was about sixteen percent. So we're a smaller portion of the overall tax bill this year for two thousand and twenty-three. But you, there's a lot of different taxing bodies that are together. When you get the tax bill at home, all of these different taxing bodies go into that final dollar amount that you paid to foot county. So the levy foundation is on a calendar year, ties with our fiscal year. We levy to a specific dollar amount, and this year, we're targeting a two-point-nine percent total increase in the city levy. Well, that's really driven by that's public safety support, right? We're looking at police and fire pensions, and they're the biggest increase on the levy. That's really due to, we talked about it a few months ago in July, about how the actuary has switched from one firm to another. They basically tried to recreate what the prior firm did, but sometimes there's proprietary data, so they, you know, bring what is closest, and they recalculated. So there was a change in the actuary firm that resulted in a higher increase in the levy. And then we went back and changed the assumption method. So we're already targeting a hundred percent funded by two thousand and forty, but instead of doing it, what I was calling in that memo, a layered cake approach, where each year, we add like a new layer, and we amortize that over fifteen years. We switched to, let's refinance our house every year, so we take all of that unfunded liability that we owe, and we say we're going to refinance it just like you would your house. And so each year, we then refinance the total amount and amortize that over fifteen years is the goal. So the results of that is an increase in those two, well, together, an increase in those levies. The additionally, there's non-public safety staff, so the IMRF pension has an increase of just under twenty-thousand dollars. And then the corporate levy, this is really supporting, last year, we really increased this to help support creating the Human Services Department. And this is continuation support, as we get further into this, to support a half-position in that department. So overall, and then local roads stay the same, E nine-one, the levy is the same. And then the bonds are basically built upon the debt service, which is virtually the same. So the total increase would be a two-point-nine percent increase. Total expenditures for the general fund. So when we look at proposed expenditures, you can see over time, I can, did it in the stacked graph here. So you can see the largest portion, the bottom part of the big area graph, is salary and benefits, right? It's the people that do the services that we provide for the city, and then the benefits that support that, those positions. And then at the very top is just what we talked about, the police and fire pension. So you can see that has a larger role. But there's in the middle, this kind of yellowish line, that's what, it's called chargebacks and administration fees. And so I phrase this as, in working with the city manager, this is the money that stays internal, where everything else on this chart is money that goes external, right? We pay residents, we pay contracts, it leaves the door, it walks out of the city. But chargebacks and admin fees are, if we're doing work in the utilities fund or the refuse fund, they're enterprise funds, and those funds are supposed to support themselves like a business. So if the city manager or the finance director or someone else is doing work for the refuse fund and we're not typically charged to that fund, there is a chargeback for services or an administration fee. And that's what you're seeing a biggest increase in the twenty-five budget, is we're restoring some of those chargebacks. And we've spent time on finance, kind of recalculating the chargebacks to make better sense, to have a better nexus to what we're charging back to what's being charged to the other fund. So an example of this is the garage fund maintains the vehicles for the city and some equipment. So we went through and said, I'm going to count every vehicle we have, and I'm going to take the dollar amount of every vehicle, buy those departments and the funds that they're in, and I used a weighted average, because if we just use the number of vehicles, the police department would probably have the highest, because they have a lot of vehicles, or public works, they have a lot of vehicles too. But dollar amount-wise, they're not as significant dollar amount-wise as, say, the fire department. Fire trucks are a lot more expensive. So taking a weighted average of those two is a better mechanism, take that percentage and, and charge the different funds what needs to kind of be paid. So refuse needs to pay for to main their trucks to the garage fund. So that's really what you're seeing here, is the general fund also has chargebacks in which it pays. And so that's what you're seeing in that yellow kind of middle bracket. And the overall percentages are in the pie chart. You can see salary and benefits are fifty-two percent, and then police and fire pensions are additional nineteen. Chargebacks are fifteen percent, contractual services eleven, other finance uses are two percent, supplies are one percent, and all the rest were below one percent, so they're just showing this little slices. So the additions to the general fund. The biggest is staffing, right? So the human services, that we talked about a little bit on that levy, is adding a part-time position to support senior services within that department. And then also to add one full-time management analyst, mainly to support human resources in the city manager's office. So those two, so it's a one-and-a-half full-time equivalent added to the general fund. But then when we look at the charts, it's kind of busy, and I'm going to explain it. This is, we take the five-year forecast chart, and I've added the budget to it. So if we look where the arrow is, the yellow line, that was our twenty-three five-year forecast, right? That's what we looked at last year. But if we go to that gray line, that's where the five-year forecast said we're going to end this year. And you can see there's positive movement, because we took that twenty-three forecast, we brought you a budget based on the, you know, what the forecast told us to look at, built it in the strategy, and we made changes to services and to the revenues that support those services. So there's a positive movement. That's why I say you look at the forecast, you see how it goes, but we're never going to not do something. We are going to take action when you see things like that, and this shows that. We looked at it last year, we took action, it led us in a positive direction. I discussed some of the other changes, like with the revenues coming in a little bit better. That kind of dark blue-black line, that's the twenty-five budget. So it's actually a little bit better than if we just looked at the five-year forecast. So you can see we're making positive movements and positive changes that impact the health of your funds. The orange and like light-blue line, these are the fund balance policy for the general fund as exists. So right now, it's a range of fifteen percent to thirty percent of all expenditures. And we're within that range in twenty-five. The like light-blue line, kind of by that green line, green-brown line. This is a proposed change to the policy, and that would be to change to twenty percent of operating expenditures. And what I mean by that is operating expenditures would include those things that we have, I call, fast control over. So transfers, the debt service, the internal service chargebacks, and police and fire pension funding. So when you have a range of the percentage, so police and fire pension, for the dollar amount we need that the actuary determined for us, we only levy that exact dollar. But if you're looking at your fund balance policy, we should actually be levying a dollar plus fifteen percent or plus thirty percent, whatever you want within that range. But that's not realistic on what we're looking at as council. We're looking at, we need X dollar amount to fund this, and we're going to do one-for-one when it comes to something like police and fire pension funding. So taking that out of that range calculation helps, you know, have a better look and a forecast of where your controllable expenses are within the general fund. And same with the internal service chargebacks. If we're going to see another recession or something occurred that we needed to take quick action, one of the first things we'd do is we'd stop doing those chargebacks. We would look to other funds, we can use some fund balance in those other funds, and I wouldn't move money out of the general fund, we would keep it in the general fund. So there's items that we can take quick action to make changes for. So taking those out of what we're calling operating expenditures keeps you kind of still aligned with the bottom of the current range, that's why we're targeting that twenty percent. So changing that definition of what expenditures are in your policy, and then putting a priority to the use of fund balance. So one, if we have extra funding or funding above our policy, can we put it to one-time projects within the general fund first? Is there a need, is there something we want to do within the general fund that we can address with that funding? If not, can we move that money to local roads? Because when we look at the local roads fund, there's a funding need there. So can we move it there and support that fund? And if you choose not to do that, and something else comes up, the city manager would be authorized to recommend to council to use the one-time money for anything else beyond those priorities, but kind of giving a priority order to those. So now we're on to motor fuel and local roads funds. So motor fuel, this is one that also the Illinois Municipal League estimates. Motor fuel is not trending upward, right? We're getting more fuel-efficient, we're switching some to electric vehicles. So the per capita amount that the city is receiving for MFT is actually decreasing. So we're seeing a decrease in twenty-four, but then also a continued a one percent decrease for twenty-five and over the forecast, that decrease continues. The renewal fund allotment is a little bit different, that's calculated through the state. They're actually showing an increase, which is good, it kind of offsets motor fuel a little bit. And then that is showing a one-and-a-half percent increase from twenty-five forward in the forecast. But in reality, that funding source is not growing with our expenditures, and we have a lot of good things going on in motor field. So I'll let Erin go over the capital plan on this fund.
Thank you Director Talkington, Mayor, Council, thank you for having me tonight. I get the pleasure of talking to you about roadways, one of my favorite topics. The first thing we're going to look at is the MFT funding for our annual road programs. You'll notice this year, they're a little bit higher than they have been in the past. That is on purpose. We have one-point-zero-two-five million scheduled for resurfacing and reconstruction to come out of the MFT fund this year. We bolstered it up because of the, the need of the local roads fund. So we're trying to shift that a little bit in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six into the MFT fund. And then we're going to slightly taper that back into local roads as the years progress. So you'll see that number drop significantly kind of out of MFT over the years. I didn't want to talk, but a little bit about the expenditure options, you're going to see this come back to you later on in the presentation. So for this year, we're presenting three different options for council to consider for our road programs. One is a approximately two-million-dollar program, this was presented right now. That is going to keep you kind of status quo with what we've had in the past few years. It's going to keep our PCI around the sixty-five to sixty-seven mark, and the PCI is the pavement condition index. And that's, you know, a good average to have. The second program that we're going to present to you is a two-point-five-million-dollar program. That extra five-hundred-thousand dollars is going to go into resurfacing. What you'll see there is a significant progress towards resurfacing more streets. So you can see potentially a two-year bump up a road will get, you know? So instead of being paved in two thousand and twenty-eight, could be paved in two thousand and twenty-six. We're shifting that funding to resurfacing and not reconstruction for one main reason, resurfacing gets you much, much farther with the money spent recon. If you put that extra five-hundred-thousand dollars there, you're not going to see a significant increase in mileage. The last option, and the one that gives me, scares the most, is the one-year pause on the annual program. That would be either resurfacing or reconstruction side of things. Doing that pause would, would show a decrease in the PCI, so that's something that we probably would recommend. Okay. So we have some expenditures here. I excluded the MFT portion. This is over five years. So we have our annual road resurfacing, annual road reconstruction of one-point-five-six million dollars for each of those. And then you have sidewalk and curb maintenance program coming out. There's two-hundred-three-thousand dollars per year, so it's just a little over one-million dollars per year or per five years for that infrastructure. I'm going to jump to capital really quick. So again, resurfacing, reconstruction, annual programs, the total for those is around eleven million dollars over the course of five years. And that does include MFT and the money coming out of local roads fund, as well as the money that's coming out of the utilities fund, which is around a hundred thousand dollars per year for that program. Then we have surface transportation projects. These are what I would consider capacity projects, these are our grant-funded projects mainly. They take a significant long period of time. For example, Central Road, we started phase one in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll do construction of that in two thousand and twenty-eight. That's the planned timeline, so those see a significant amount of time. We have New Willy, El Conquin Intersection, Weber Drive, Central Road, X-Street Bike Path, Kershaw Resurfacing. These are our major capacity projects that we see. And then the last one, in-house infrastructure improvements, in-house patching program. I want to talk about this just a little bit, because of some of the changes that we've made recently on this program. What we've done is, in the past, two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, and years prior to that, we actually had split programs. So we did half-in-house, and then we contracted the other half out through a joint purchasing agency to Chicago Land Paving or a contractor that would come in and do the patching. And this is kind of our large-area patches. We shifted that this year to funding entirely an in-house program. So what we were able to do for that is it took up two weeks more of time, but we were able to see a significant increase in the amount of patching that we were able to do. And the quality also improves, because our guys are doing it. I may be a little biased, but I think they're pretty good at patching. And then also, thanks to Tyler Munis and the workhorse system that we have, now it's fully built out, thanks to IT and finance, we've been actually able to go back and look exactly at the numbers for what we're spending. That includes crew time, truck time, and patch cost, material cost. And what you're seeing is a few dollars, doesn't sound like a lot, but a few dollars per square yard less than what it would be for a contractor to come in. So we are saving money, even when you count not just material cost, and you count staff time and truck time as well. So we're very excited to actually be able to pull those numbers out of the Tyler system. The last one, it's not technically an in-house program, I wanted to include it in here, we talked a little bit about it earlier, the sidewalk and curb replacement program that we have, two-hundred-three-thousand dollars allocated over the next five years each year. And that includes kind of various replacements of sidewalk, we, we take that systematically through the city. And then we also have a curb cutting or a sidewalk cutting program, where we'll go in, we'll have usually around twenty-thousand dollars per year. That saves us, instead of replacing two squares to clean up a trip hazard, we'll go in, we'll actually cut the trip down, as long as it meets certain requirements, and we get pretty far on that program, and save a significant amount of money while making everything ADA compliant.
Okay, I'm trying to go back one slide, but... I think so. I'm stuck. Well, he's fixing that, you guys saw the slide a minute ago, I can at least talk through it. The local roads fund, revenue sources are, the largest is the property tax levy. And council has made decisions in the last few years to move that levy up. So it used to be a million dollars, even, and now we've moved up in the current year at the one-point-six million. And that has continued at that dollar amount in the two thousand and twenty-four levy that we looked at. The other portion of funding here is the natural gas tax. Again, this is trending below budget. People again are getting more efficient, we're using less gas. So it's continued to show, so it was below budget, I put it down for the twenty-four projection, and then it's flat through twenty-five on. And then home road motor fuel, very similar to motor fuel tax, right? It's trending below budget, so twenty-four is down about fourteen percent, but then we're forecasted over the forecast to go down one percent annually. What this is telling you is the revenues for a local road fund are declining, while the expenses in these great projects we have are still in need. So we're really looking at the local road fund, here is the forecast. In the current FY twenty-five budget, I did add, which wasn't in the forecast, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer from building and land to kind of give it a, just a little bit of boost in the current year. And this will allow finance and public works to really work during the twenty-five year to look at funding and options to stabilize this fund and bring that back as part of the twenty-six budget. So this is giving us kind of one more year of looking at local roads this way. And then next year, hopefully, we have better options for us to look at this fund, because these are essential projects. You can see, again, we did make changes last year. The gray is what we were forecasted, we looked at the forecast last year, we shifted some of those projects to motor fuel. So that's why the yellow is better, but then... But then like the budget, because we added, I again updated the revenues, there was a little bit more positive news. I shifted some of the projections, but also that one-time transfer helped bring us up to where the arrow is for the forecast, or for the budget. When we go back to motor fuel, you can kind of see this is the opposite. That twenty-three forecasted fund balance is the gray, but we intentionally moved projects to this fund to spend out of this fund. So that's your, um, yellow forecast. Uh, and this is also showing those, um, options. So if you do the enhanced funding, that's the green line. It goes a little bit lower than that yellow line, which is the current forecast. And then the, um, one-year pause is the orange. So it actually brings that fund balance up higher, the two options that Director Rosoff went through. Vehicle and equipment and building and land funds. These are internal service funds. They support other city funds. They're funded by those other funds through their chargebacks. So in the forecast, the chargebacks remain level, but like I said, we went through and did some updating to the chargebacks. So on the vehicle chargeback, we updated it to reflect the current purchase plan. Um, and that vehicle chargeback's basically straight-line depreciation, whatever vehicle you have out. And then we charged those funds that depreciation that year. And I also updated the building and land, uh, chargebacks to be reflective of what goes into building and land projects. So, the biggest, um, items in here are expenditures and they fluctuate on the capital plan. So I'll let Director Rosoff go over the capital plan.
Thank you. Okay, so first up, everybody should be very familiar with this one. This is our fire ladder truck, uh, tossed a total of two-point-five million dollars for the city to purchase. Uh, the first payment was made, I believe, this year to lock our spot in the production line. And we're going to see that truck hopefully in twenty twenty-eight where the remainder of the payment will be due. And that will be one billion dollars. So we do have that planned in our capital plan for twenty twenty-eight. Uh, the next, uh, item you'll see is also kind of a reoccurring one. You may have seen in the past, it's the crime scene evidence van. Uh, there were some kind of tricky numbers with that, with the budgeting over the past few years. But we believe we have locked in a pretty good price at two fifteen, um, which obviously we will bring back to council for approval in twenty twenty-five. Uh, then the next couple of things we have here are front-load refuse trucks. We have seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars budgeted over the next five years. That's going to purchase us two trucks, we're hoping. Uh, we may see a price increase come in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, there's some new, uh, regulations coming out that could impact some of the pricing on our trucks that we're keeping an eye on. Uh, that's something that our staff is always monitoring. Uh, and then last but not least, for vehicle purchases, this is a staple we see in every year. Our frontline squads, they're on a five-year essentially rotating basis. Uh, we want to keep those vehicles fresh, uh, and ready to go for our police. And we also have some investigation vehicles that are not on the same five-year timeline. Uh, but we do want to rotate those out semi-frequently just due to the nature of, of what those vehicles are doing for the city. And then building and land, we have some exciting projects coming up. Possible public works, storage facility, engineering and construction, a little over two million dollars in twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, that will be, uh, allocated depending on the result of the space need study that's currently ongoing for Public Works Department. Uh, we have a city hall roof replacement, that's a less exciting project. Uh, we have six-hundred-thousand dollars budgeted in twenty-five for that. Uh, that is currently being undergone for engineering right now. We're hoping to see some other options that could save us some funding on this project. Uh, so we'll see what comes in once that engineering is done. And then the last one we have on here, EV charging and infrastructure upgrades at City Hall. Uh, so we do have around at least seventeen vehicles that have kind of been pinpointed by our staff that could be replaced by EV vehicles. Uh, and those are typically admin, uh, community development related types of vehicles, uh, that are not frontline emergency response. And in order to have those vehicles actually stationed at City Hall, we definitely need an electric infrastructure upgrade. We just simply can't plug them in right now, uh, they won't charge. So, part of that one hundred thousand dollars is actually going to get us an infrastructure upgrade here. Combed will actually have to come out and do the work. And then we'll actually see, uh, some of the charging equipment as well. Passing it back to Mark.
I think I need to get taller. So the vehicle and equipment fund, it, this is the forecast again, very similar to what we've seen in the other funds. The forecasted amount we had for twenty-three is a lot lower than what we looked at at the twenty-four forecast, which, so the yellow line was last year, the gray line's this year. And then again, with some adjustments, that kind of orange-brown line is where the budget is. This does have about a million-dollar fund balance policy, but the fluctuations in here where it's dipping below in twenty-five but then goes back up is perfectly normal for a fund like this, right? Because we save, 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 we buy something, uh, like paying the down payment for the fire truck. We've had a lot of funding in one year and then we build back up and then we pay again. So, it's natural to see fluctuations in this fund and then again in building and land. And then building land, you see the same kind of structure with those. And the budget is a little bit higher because again, we can right-size what those chargebacks should be for this fund. The refuse fund. So, in twenty twenty-three, we did the fiscal stability plan. We had a one-time rate increase in twenty-four that was to maintain our current service levels. That rate increase stays the same over the life of the forecast. The twenty-five budget maintains that rate level from twenty-four. Our operating expenses, if you exclude those chargebacks, those kind of internal amounts, actually are decreasing about four percent. Um, and then there's no planned capital for the life of, um, the forecast. So again, here you can see for twenty-five, um, because the chargebacks were changed, the chargebacks were updated in those other funds. It does impact the refuse fund. You can see actually the twenty-five budget goes a little bit lower. We're still going to watch this fund, um, because the rate increase did well, it brought us back up. But we're going to keep it at the same and just kind of watch this fund over the next year, see where we are. And the policy range here is about thirty percent to fifty percent of expenditures. Utilities funds. So again, this was part of the fiscal stability plan. So we increased rates for the utilities funds for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. They helped restore the fund balance for those current services. It assumes that capital projects average about three million a year. And this, in this case, the rate increases were annually through, um, thirty-one. So all of those built in, or all of those are built in that we had already approved last year. And excluding any grant funding revenue, the growth for revenue is about one point eight annually. Our operational growth averages about two-point-seven over the forecast. The largest portion of this is the Lake Michigan water purchase at a five percent annual increase. I will say in the twenty-four projection, it looks like we're only going four percent increase. So, this is one of those where I hope that it's lower every year, but to be conservative, we're showing it a five percent increase. And again, we're looking at capital expenses averaging the three million per year. And Director Rosoff will go over capital.
All right. Some more fun capital projects. Uh, we'll start with water. Uh, these are some of our larger projects over the next few years. Uh, you see pump station two and five upgrades for a total of one point seven-six million. Uh, the Quinton Jarre booster station at one point seven-eight. These two projects kind of go hand in hand with each other. Uh, you're going to see increased pressure throughout the city, uh, once they're done. You're going to see a dual pressure zone. And we're able to see that increased pressure because of that dual zone. Uh, and then you're also going to see some energy savings at our pump stations because we're going to go to a variable frequency drive pump. So a VFD pump. Uh, that means when you flick the switch on, they're not going to go from zero to a hundred. They're actually going to tailor down the speed, uh, and velocity of the pump to whatever the situation calls for. Uh, so we should see significant energy savings from that improvement as well. Uh, and then we have the new Wilkie water main replacement. It's a pretty large replacement project for us. New Wilkie water main, it's very deep, um, and that's coming up, I believe, in twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-six. Uh, sanitary projects, the big one on the horizon is lift station three upgrades and improvements. We have one point two million dollars scheduled for that. Uh, we are currently undergoing, uh, the design engineering for it, uh, right now, and we plan for construction in twenty twenty-five. If you don't count that project, uh, kind of the largest project that we have in sanitary is a multiple grouping of one. And that is the MWRD required items that we have to spend on, and that's CIPP lining or curative place lining. Uh, we have manhole rehabilitation, and then we also have some smoke testing in there that we have to do once every five years. Uh, those improvements total about two-point-zero-three million. That does include the T-lining as well, uh, which is every other year improvement. That is not a required program. That is something that we are doing to proactively enhance our infrastructure, uh, to prevent breaks at T-liners. For stormwater, last but certainly not least, we have the Park Street Storm, our final phase that was programmed in the capital plan. It's phase three for around eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we'll be very excited to get that project wrapped up. And then you'll also see a stormwater master plan and a sanitary master plan, uh, coming for you for approval in twenty twenty-five due to sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, per plan. And that's all for utilities.
So when we go back to our chart for utilities, you're saying that, um, the, well, this one switched. So gray is the twenty-three forecasted fund balance. We made changes, right? So we went up to the yellow, that's our ending fund balance plus reserves in the current forecast. And then with some changes in the, um, proposed budget, we were right in line, basically at our operating, uh, expenditure policy target, twenty-five percent. E-nine-one-one fund, this was added to the five-year forecast mainly because we have one large project. Well, or, um, I call it project, but you know, it's ongoing. So, the E-nine-one-one helps support public safety services and related capital. It's funded by property tax levy that we've had flat at seven hundred thousand annually. That's to remain at seven hundred thousand in the twenty-five budget and over the forecast I had kept it at that amount. However, we added in twenty-four body cameras for the police department. Remember, this is, uh, state mandated, and that's about two hundred thousand dollars annually. So this is just a fund to watch. So as we're looking at it right now, the forecast is in the yellows, that's twenty twenty-four forecast. There is not a twenty-three forecast, it wasn't there last year. And again, with some, looking at the budget and adjustments, um, the FY twenty-five budget's actually right at the top end of the fund policy of one and a half times annual expenditures for twenty-five. But this one's really kind of on our radar to watch over the next few years. So, capital improvements plan overall, your, uh, Director Rosoff went over our major projects in those funds. But here's just kind of what capital improvements looks like in total by fiscal year. You can see in twenty-five, uh, it's really a peak year. Director Rosoff, did you want to go through the charts or we can just run through it? And, yeah. And as we go further out, so each year, we look at the capital improvements plan. You know, we update the projects. We do have some projects in twenty twenty-nine that'll probably have better funding estimates as we get closer and closer to those years. And you can see the breakdown of the projects by each category here. So annual roads is really that bottom, kind of bluish, and then your water projects, the other large one is kind of the grayish in the middle. And the top is your streets and sidewalks. Those are kind of your three large categories. And here's kind of a breakdown of those on a pie chart. You can see annual roads is eleven point eight-five million, water projects eleven point one million, and streets and sidewalks at eight point eight million. So all funds, we didn't go through every single fund, but we do have some good news. There's other funds, all of it I think is good news, right? We purposely budget conservatively. So there's a lot of things going on in the city that are like right there, and they're really exciting. And you'll see one on our agenda later, you know, looking at the Pacifica development on our agenda. You know, what's going forward with that project and other projects in the city could really make a difference in what we're looking at the revenues. Um, but because they're all just kind of right there, I stay conservative and some of those projects weren't included in our forecast. But, what that means is, when those projects occur and we get better funding than what we budgeted, it goes into our fund balance and we help build those reserves and we can use them like we talked about with the general fund policy. What can we target that additional funding to help support? What other projects or can we help the local roads fund? So, it does help us, it puts us in a positive position when we look at the next year. And again, we'll look at these graphs next year and we'll see the twenty-four, uh, twenty-four forecast, we'll see twenty-five. And I'm betting we'll see positive movement because we are making changes to address what we see in that forecast. So this includes all city funds. You can see that in total revenues are about seventy-nine million, expenditures are eighty-eight million. That includes all the city's chargebacks. Both of our TIFs are finally in a positive fund balance position, which is great. That allows us to look at those funds and what economic development or what projects we can do in those areas. So there's a lot of positive kind of information in all of your funds and, and things that we look at during the year to be excited about. And again, really, it's local roads is the one that, we're going to look at twenty-five and try to bring back to you options of what we can do to stabilize that fund for twenty-six. So there's a request for council direction tonight, right? What do you, council want to, um, provide for the recommended budget and for the twenty-five, twenty-nine capital plan? Because I kind of sprinkled in a lot of questions throughout the presentation, we're going to do it by category. So remember, that forecast becomes our strategy. So we're looking at public safety support, stabilizing revenues and fund balance, and investing in capital. So first, public safety support. Does council support the property tax levy increase for those public safety pensions?
Thank you Director Tockington. Um, any questions or comments regarding public safety? All right, then we'll jump straight to a straw vote, um, all those in favor of the property tax levy increase for the public safety pensions. Okay, I'm seeing four and, uh, and then one against, and one against, okay? So the majority for the support for the property tax levy increase for public safety pensions. What do you have next for us?
The next is stabilizing revenues and fund balance. So the first one, and these are more just guidance, um, the first two are more guidance going forward. One is just to develop funding options for our local road fund during twenty-five that we'll bring back for the twenty-six budget. Uh, and the second is bring back information, additional discussions on the local option for grocery tax. Both of these, I don't believe we need straw poll tonight because we'll probably be asking for more information when we come back to council. The third one though, support the property tax levy increase for those non-public safety pension and the corporate levy that, uh, supports the general fund, that we are looking for direction.
All right, so then the first is, so do you want the first and the third? Direction for developing the funding options for local road funding? Or leave that one?
No, leave that, we'll come back and get direction then.
Then, council, are, is there any question regarding the support for the property tax levy increase for non-public safety pensions and corporate levy for the general fund support? Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
Do we know what impact this would have on an individual property in the city?
I don't, I have that information on, right here, but I can get back to you on that. But the overall increase with the police and fire would be a two-point-nine percent increase to the levy in total.
Which goes back on the property taxes.
Correct.
And to clarify, because it's a, it's a sum of money, it's not an individual two-point-nine percent increase across all property tax owners. Depending on what individual property tax owner has, uh, done for that property, rates can increase or decrease for that particular owner. Uh, Director Tockington, I don't know if you want to add a, a couple more building blocks for the, the general approach of how we have a sum of money versus a flat percentage across all property tax bills in the city?
Yeah, so, um, when you get your property tax levy, you know, the, there's a lot of entities involved in assessing your, the value of your home. And so, uh, there's been a lot of news, I think people have read about, um, the Cook County Assessor reassessing homes. So there's like a three-year cycle. Rolling Meadows Part of Us has been in that kind of three-year evaluation period within the last two years. Um, so when they look at your home, they're saying, I think, well, lately it's been more value to your home. So if your home value increases, the levy in a total, right? Because the bill, remember, we look at the dollar bill, it's all of those different entities. That total is then applied to that assessed value. And we only receive about fifteen percent of that total. Now, if you're assuming that your house isn't reevaluated, so if your home is worth two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and you, uh, paid five thousand dollars, the next year it's still worth two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the city's portion, you should see a slight increase. It's assuming nothing else changes, right? Um, but because there's so many other factors in the levy, it's difficult to pinpoint exactly, you know, what portion. But I can put together the calculation, assuming nothing else changes, here's what the impact would be on an average home.
Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
So, the reevaluation doesn't always mean your taxes are going to go up.
Not always, but lately in the paper it was saying that, so I was just going off of what we've seen lately.
Because you take the valuation and divide it equally amongst all the reven, uh, expenditures, whatever they submit. So, if you go from a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar three years ago to four-hundred-thousand dollars, doesn't mean you're going to go up by that amount, right? Percentage-wise.
Right, exactly.
Because they, so that, that's one thing. So this is too complicated for me. But if we increase a tax levy by two or three percent, that does increase even if it stays flat, right?
It will increase the city's portion of levy. So, um, let me go back to that dollar. So, it doesn't necessarily equate to our portion being higher. So it doesn't necessarily equate to our portion being higher. Sorry, because I jumped backwards. So last year, we actually did have an increase in our levy, right? However, our portion of the tax bill actually went down because other taxing agencies also did things with their levy. So it doesn't always equal one-for-one that our portion of the tax will be larger because we have an increase. But if I can put it together for you, if I assume an average home is this, and nothing else changes, what that impact would be for you? But it's not necessarily a one-for-one, because like I said, all the other taxing bodies also.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. My concern is always.
What ours is.
Well, leaning more and more on the taxes of the citizens' homes to a point where they get frustrated with the fact that it's unaffordable to live in the city. So that's my concern. I'd appreciate if you can give me some sense of what a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, what it would, how would it impact the three-hundred-thousand-dollar home in the city of Rolling Meadows?
Additionally, Alderman Kohler, it's not just residential properties that are taxed, and so because of the economic development that this council has supported, we again will see that portion of property taxes decrease across the board for the entire city of Rolling Meadows. And I don't know if City Manager Rob Sabo, if you have any additional information as to what progress we've made so far and what we might anticipate in the future regarding that taxing scheme.
Specifically related to public safety pensions or progress or?
I think it would be helpful in general when we talk about a percentage of the property tax increasing, how that's just an amount and how it's distributed where it's, as we've been saying, it's not one-for-one for a property, an individual property residential owner to see a tax bill increase.
Sure. So Finance Director Tockington spoke a very brief, made a brief comment about it, but economic development is a big part of how we calculate our EAV within the community. And so as we have commercial properties come on board, a large portion of the property tax burden tends to shift onto those high-value properties. As we pursue projects like the Pacifica project, which would, is proposed to redevelop the former Sam's Club property. Right now, that property is being assessed at a rate where it is a long-term vacant big-box retail location, which has a much lower assessed value according to the assessor's office than a multi-tenant occupied functioning space. Similarly, as we look at data center development and those types of uses, it continues to grow your commercial portion of what your total equalized assessed value is across the entire city. And in a property tax setting, you have seniors who have certain senior discounts, senior frees, senior homeowners exemptions, which help shield the senior members of our community from some of those property tax increases. And with economic development being an important part of how you build your tax base, with that push towards those additional developments happening in your community, those types of uses can continue to make up what is the amount of property tax that the city collects. As your EAV grows and your percentage increases, the burden on your residential properties when you have commercial growth happening is lessened. The one thing I also, if it's okay, Mayor, the one thing I also wanted to note, just looking at the non-public safety pension side of the tax levy, the dollar amount of what the increase is, is twenty-seven thousand three-hundred-and-two dollars across all properties within the city of Rolling Meadows. So when we put this together, it'll likely show as a pretty small impact on an average three-hundred-thousand-dollar home when you equalize that across all properties. But we'll go ahead and put that calculation together, and as was mentioned by the Finance Director, it'll be an approximation, but it won't be an exact estimate for every single homeowner that's out there based on whatever exemptions that might exist on their specific properties.
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
So as a follow-up to that, if I heard correctly, we were conservative on what we're projecting for increased revenues from things like economic development, is that correct?
Correct.
So we really don't consider in the five-year outlook what could we gain from that, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if we do have significant gains in economic development, such as redevelopment of some of our perch-off-road real estate that we're sitting on and some of the other things, if anything ever happens at Arlington Park and we get development that goes on within our city, we can't do anything about Arlington Park, but in our city development, that could increase that revenue and that could help our residents' taxes, am I correct?
That is correct.
And so right now, we don't have that in the plan, but it may happen, and that would help our citizens in the long run, right? Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so seeing that, we'll have a straw poll this evening for supporting the property tax levy increase for non-public safety pensions and corporate levy for the general fund support. Do we have that support all, or those in favor, please raise your hand? So we have four in favor and one against, so majority to move forward for direction.
Madam Mayor, I'm abstaining, I'm not objecting, I'm abstaining for approval.
Noted.
Thank you. And then the last is investment in capital. So Director Grossop discussed this. So the council consideration for the annual roads program is to keep what's in the budget, the two million for the annual road program, or we can increase that by half a million dollars, two-point-five million for the annual road program. That will expedite the road resurfacing and likely increase your pavement condition index, or we can pause the annual programs for one year. But remember, this was not recommended by our director.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Sorry to keep doing this, Madam Mayor, but if I understood correct from our previous discussions on this, to pause or even to go with the two-million-dollar, we pay the price in the long run, right?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. So if you pause a resurfacing program and roads get pushed out a little bit longer, they could fall into what we would call the reconstruction cycle, and the cost per square yard replacement goes up significantly in recon versus resurfacing.
So thinking strategically over the five-year plan, to put two-point-five million may actually save us money over the five-year plan. Am I understanding that from our previous discussions?
I don't think it won't save you money over the course of five years, but in the long term, you could see savings by not having to reconstruct roads that would potentially fall into that category.
Okay, thank you.
All right. In that case, then, I'm going to jump for that second item to say if, all those in favor of the two-point-five annual road program, or the two-point-five million annual road program request from staff, all those in favor. Okay, so we have four in favor and one against. All right, so you have your direction there?
Right, and that's everything. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This now brings us to our reports this evening. There is no mayor report. Are there any ward reports this evening? Okay, seeing none, we have no signatories on this public comment for sign-in sheet, so we'll move on to our consent ordinances this evening. We have four items, items A through D. We'll be pulling D because there is a request from staff to waive first reading. Is there any older person who wishes to remove one of the ordinances from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, then the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the remaining three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. The ordinances are item A, ordinance number twenty-four.
Mayor, I apologize to interrupt you, but we are looking for waiver of second reading on one of those ordinances.
Yes, I have item D pulled, so we're just looking at items A, B, and C.
I apologize.
I'm glad you even us on our toes. So first is item A, ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero, to establish the date and hours of trick-or-treating for Halloween. The second is B, ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero, to establish convenience fees for electronic payments. And lastly, item C, ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero, to modify the procedural requirements for subdivisions. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale. Budman.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, those ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to item D, ordinance number twenty-four-dash-forty-one, which is to authorize building permits for the Pacifica on golf development, and the request from staff is to waive first reading. Is there an older person willing to make a motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the waiver of first reading? Hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budman.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved for a second reading, which brings us back to second reading. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budman.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to new business on item E, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budman.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, the warrant's approved. This now brings us to our consent resolutions this evening, which consists of three items, items F through H. Is there any older person that wishes to remove one of the resolutions from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the three resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Item F, resolution number twenty-four-dash-R-dash-seventy-three, is to approve a supplemental Phase-One Engineering Services Agreement with Engineering Resource Associates, ERA, for the industrial Meadowbrook Court Bridge Replacement Project. Item G, resolution number twenty-four-dash-R-dash-seventy-four, to approve the purchase of record digitization services. And item H, resolution number twenty-four-dash-R-dash-seventy-five, to approve and ratify emergency repairs to the city's water infrastructure, a twenty-six-hundred Plum Grove Road completed by A.J. Olson Construction Company for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and no cents. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budman.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. We have one appointment this evening for the Economic Development Committee, and it is a reappointment for Janine Mullenelli. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this reappointment? Hearing none, the question is, shall the reappointment be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budman.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this reappointment is approved. We do have one proclamation this evening, and this is regarding the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And for this evening's proclamation, I will read it thusly. "In the city of Rolling Meadows, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the city's Human Services Department and Rolling Meadows Police Department Hope Fund, our city's nonprofit arm that works towards the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas, in just one day across the U.S. and its territories, nearly seventy-five thousand victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than nine thousand residents for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet victims' needs. Whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. Whereas, the need for safe housing continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent need. And whereas, the city of Rolling Meadows joins with others across Illinois and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide, who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Rolling Meadows. Whereas, domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and the efforts of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each of which adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Laura Sanoyka, Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, hereby do proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If you have any questions regarding how to participate, please feel free to reach out to the city, and we'd be happy to get you involved. With this, I will be presenting this proclamation to our Director of Human Services, Dr. Natalia Nieves."
Thank you very much for being a part of this proclamation.
With that, do we have any reports from the city clerk this evening?
No, not tonight.
Okay, and then we will move on to our city reports and our community items of interest. With that, I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Hometown Hoedown Fall Fest will take place on Saturday, October fifth, at Hillbilly Rock Park. We welcome back the hillbilly rock stars in the evening from six to eight P.M., with food and adult beverages served throughout the day from Rep's Place. From two to six P.M., families can enjoy free hayrides, a petting zoo, pony rides, crafts, games, square dancing, and line dancing. Come out and join your neighbors to celebrate the fall season country-western style here in Rolling Meadows. Also happening on Saturday, October fifth, is the annual Rolling Meadows Public Works Document Destruction and Electronics Recycling Event from nine A.M. to noon at thirty-nine-hundred Birdnik Street at the Public Works Facility. This event is in partnership with the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, and residents from SWANC communities are eligible to participate. For rules and regulations, please visit SWANC, that's S-W-A-N-C-C dot org. Help the Rolling Meadows High School Mustangs pack the food pantry with cereal boxes. Donations of sealed cereal boxes are appreciated as the mighty Mustangs compete with Elk Grove High School to collect the most by halftime at their football game on Friday, October twenty-fifth. Bring in your donation to the Rolling Meadows High School main lobby or to any home football games until October twenty-fifth. The Rolling Meadows Human Services Team cordially invites you to attend a special luncheon to support the city's Hope Fund, being held on Thursday, October tenth, at eleven A.M. at La Mirage Banquets here in Rolling Meadows. The Hope Fund is a Rolling Meadows nonprofit organization providing emergency financial support to community members in need or those individuals who have been a victim of abuse. Please register by calling the Human Services Department at eight-four-seven-eight-seven-zero-two-six-nine-five. Residents of all ages are invited to drop by the Rolling Meadows Fire Department Open House on Saturday, October twelfth, from ten A.M. to two P.M. at Fire Station Fifteen, located at thirty-two-oh-one Algonquin Road. Visitors can get a behind-the-scenes glimpse of life in the fire service. Residents of all ages are welcome to explore the inside of fire trucks and learn about firefighting equipment, training tactics, and the lifesaving practice, lifesaving services provided by the city's firefighters. Other features include station tours, a live burn demonstration, vehicle extrication, kids' games, and complimentary food and drinks. Parking will be available at La Mirage next door to the fire station at thirty-two-twenty-three Algonquin Road. For more information, please call the fire department at eight-four-seven-three-nine-seven-three-three-five-two. The city invites Rolling Meadows veterans of all ages to attend the complimentary Veterans Dinner on Friday, November eighth, at Meridian Banquets at five P.M. This annual event celebrates the city's veterans with a four-course dinner, a guest speaker, attendee gifts, live music, and more. All veterans are welcome to bring one guest. Registration is due by Friday, November first, to Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sezak by calling eight-four-seven-eight-seven-zero-nine-zero-zero-five. That's all for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. We also have the August twenty-twenty-four financial report in this evening's agenda. If you have any questions regarding that report, please feel free to reach out to Finance Director Molly Tockington directly. This then brings us to our last item for our city staff reports, which is the October eighth, twenty-twenty-four City Council draft agenda. And for that, I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda is included in tonight's agenda packet. Few items of note include bringing forward an ordinance based on council direction to update the city's tobacco, vape, and CBD shop regulations, as well as an ordinance to ban the sale of THC, kratom, and teneptine products from being sold within the city. Additionally, under resolutions, we're also going to be requesting state legislative action and support regarding the regulation of those substances as well. The agenda, again, as I mentioned, is included in the agenda packet from tonight's
Um the agenda, again, as I mentioned, is in, included in the agenda packet from tonight's meeting. It is a draft and will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, uh a minimum of forty, uh forty-eight hours prior to that meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you. We did, on an earlier agenda, have listed um a request to go into closed session. However, at this point, um, oh, I'm sorry. Are there any matters that are not on the agenda before I move on to that? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Um really quickly, a couple things. Um we're gonna collect cereal here at City Hall as well, so there'll be a box down, um that box over there, uh downstairs. So if you can't make it to the high school, you can drop it off at City Hall as well. Um the library is working on their strategic plan and a survey will be out for the community um to get their input back to the library, so even if you're not a library user, um they would like to hear about why you don't use the library or why you do use the library, so that uh survey link will be out at the um end of this week.
Thank you, and we'll make sure to also um promote that as well, so we have plenty of input uh from the community regarding that strategic plan. Any other items that were not on the agenda? Okay, uh seeing, seeing none, we originally were going to go into closed session, however, we are canceling closed session uh due to gaining some additional information. Uh therefore, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn this evening. Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned at eight eleven P.M.